It is 7 o'clock, ladies and gentlemen. Would you please, we do have a quorum. Would you please rise, take off your hats, and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unnationed under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball. Thank you. Welcome all. Nice full crowd tonight. I like that. Okay. We have three sets of minutes tonight. We have an executive session, we have a work study, we have a council meeting, all from April 2nd. I need a motion. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move to approve.
Got a motion to approve all three, correct?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pedo. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. On to our public meeting. We've changed the order a little bit, folks. We're actually going to start with C and then work our way back. So, Councilmember Winn, you've worked on this proclamation for Mr. Goins. Would you like to go ahead and read it?
Sure. Sure. A little over a year ago, Danville lost one of its own town hero in Chris Goins. This is the proclamation by the Danville Town Council to honor and remember the life of Chris Goins, whereas Chris Goins was a fixture and figure in the fabric of Danville, and whereas he represented the good in Danville, volunteerism, helping others, promoting the importance of being a part of community, and whereas these personal traits were shared with many friends, and whereas Chris helped to make shared blessings and Danville playscape a reality, and whereas his actions provided for a legacy to his family, which he loved enormously, now therefore be hereby proclaimed by the Danville Town Council will always remember the gift of Chris Goins and his love for family and community.
All right. We have a proclamation. Motion to accept.
Make a motion to approve the proclamation?
Second.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I believe we have copies. Mr. Winn wants to make his presentation. Does the family want to come on up and accept this plaque, please? Thank you. Moving on. Earlier this evening, the council held an executive session regarding a grievance from Captain Owen Miller. Does the council have a decision concerning this particular grievance?
I would like to table this decision. I have received notification that he's willing to extend the grievance timeframe, and I would like to schedule a second meeting where we can have the parties involved come in and be available for questions.
Okay. We have a motion to extend. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Further discussion. I believe that the information that we received from all the parties is adequate for this body to make a decision. I see no reason to extend it. However, that is just simply my opinion on this particular matter. Anyone else?
I don't see any reason to extend it either.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of extending this particular grievance process signify by saying aye. Excuse me. Let's, can we do a roll vote, roll call vote on this? Mr. Pedo?
Aye.
Mrs. Lynch?
Aye.
Sorry. I'm writing this down as I go. Mr. Winn?
Nay.
And I'll vote nay. We appear to have a tie. And according to the rules, if I'm not mistaken, the clerk treasurer must break the tie. May be, thank you. We have our attorneys. I'll say you.
I vote nay.
Nay. We voted not to extend this, so we're going to need to, we may do something tonight. Is there any other decisions or statements concerning this grievance? I will make one, that the council accept the decisions of the fire chief as it pertains to this grievance. Second. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Roll call vote. Mr. Pedo?
No.
Mrs. Lynch?
No.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Once again, Madam Clerk Treasurer?
I vote yes.
Vote is 3-2 to abide by the decisions of the fire chief. Thank you. Introduction of new recruit class. Oh, if anybody's here for Chris Goins and wants to leave, now would be the appropriate time, because we've got a lot of fire people here.
You're welcome. Thank you guys for being here.
You're welcome to stay if you like.
You could stay.
I'll get you out in 18 minutes. How's that? Is Jimmy, wait, is Jimmy here? Make it 25. All right. Chief Morgan?
Members of the council, I'm pleased to introduce tonight our, I guess it'd be our third, third recruit class that we've had. This is our second largest recruit class, so if you'll bear with me, I'm introducing myself to these people probably the same time you are. I've got their, they've written their own bios, so if I miss something, it's on them. I'll start out with M.J. Fairfield, if you want to come on up. M.J.'s been in the fire service for 13 years. He volunteered at Thorntown. He's been a paramedic at Boone County EMS for 10 years, and a firefighter at Center Township in Lebanon for six years. He's married, with two children, and lives in the Thorntown area. Stand over there. We'll have, bring them all up at once at the same, if you guys want to meet them or anything, whichever you want to do. Next is Chastity Finney. She prefers to go by Nikki. Nikki's been in the fire service for 13 years. Lives in the Monrovia area with, as I understand this, three fur babies. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you. Next is Dakota Bain. Dakota is, been in the fire service for six years, four years with the Mooresville Fire Department. He's married with, or, I'm sorry, has fiance, sorry about that, and daughter, and they live in the Cambie area. Charles has zero fire experience. He's one of our first ones to come to us with no experience, so we're excited about it. It gives us a chance to obviously mold him, I guess, not for, not to say the Danville way, but it will be nice to have no bad habits to break, I guess, so.
Why are all the guys in the back smiling?
Yeah.
Zero experience.
Charles lives in Pittsburgh with his wife and two boys, and we're glad to have him. Like I said, I know he's, he's excited about starting his career, and I hope it'll be all 20 years here. Thank you. And last but not least is Tyler Lawrence. Tyler is, as near as I could tell, has about seven years of service. Is that correct? Five? Okay. He spent some time as a volunteer with Otter Creek and Seeleyville, and then he was a career firefighter with Honey Creek Fire Department. I had to ask where that was, and then when he said where it was, it dawned on me, there's a Honey Creek Mall in Terre Haute, and then all of a sudden it dawned on me, like I said, where he was from. He's single with no children, and so he's going to have lots and lots of money, and like I said, he currently lives in Seeleyville. And these are our five new recruits.
If she wants to have a picture taken with all of us, so remember that.
If you screw up, it's okay. You don't matter, you know? Glad to have you.
You guys want to stand there for a picture real quick? Sorry, Gary.
Okay. The council is curious. We're loaded up tonight. Can everybody move down just a little bit so I don't have to take a picture? Here along with our command staff. There we go. Nice gesture for the V shift. Don't mind if I release them. They are actually on duty right now in training. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Please, please. Good luck.
That's nice showing all that support.
And better yet, they didn't catch a run while they were here. If you had that happen before. Okay. Recruits out, and we're back. All right. On to more proclamations. Laura, do you want to read this, or do you want someone else to read this?
Normally it's the pleasure of the council.
Ah, you are too kind. All right. We have another proclamation. This is a proclamation by the Danville Town Council declaring Friday, April 27, 2018, as Arbor Day in Danville. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas the town of Danville is known for its tree-lined streets and landscaped public areas, and whereas trees are an integral component of the urban environment, providing shade and beauty which enhances the community's quality of life by softening the hard appearance of masonry, structures, streets, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees in our community increase property value, enhance, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our town, and whereas trees wherever they are planted are so, source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore the Danville Town Council proclaims April 27, 2018, as Arbor Day in Danville, and all citizens and residents are encouraged to join with the town in celebrating this day by planting trees to gladden the heart, promote the well-being of this and future generations so proclaimed by the Danville Town Council the 16th day of April 2018. What is the wishes of the council? Shall we sign this tree document? All ironic, we're signing it on paper.
Approve.
I have a motion to approve. Thank you. I hope that wasn't wasted on anybody. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. I have a motion to second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Proclamation has been approved. Request for a street closure for the Indianapolis Colts Fan Fest. Shelby Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am here tonight to address the council as a whole for approval to help bring the Indianapolis Colts Summer Fan Fest to the Danville Town Square. The event coordinator for the Indianapolis Colts actually emailed town manager Gary Aiken and our executive director, Marshall Lynch, to which Mr. Aiken suggested the Danville, the Danville Chamber of Commerce take the lead on this project. The chamber, on behalf of the Indianapolis Colts, would like to request the closure of Jefferson and Marion Streets on the town square on Thursday, June 7, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The Colts' marketing team will be on site to begin setup at 1:00 p.m. with various vehicles and equipment arriving throughout the afternoon. The actual event will take place from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. and will be free to the public. The team will be clear of the area by 8:00 p.m. I have discussed this event with Superintendent Whitaker, Chief Rainey, and Chief Morgan. All three of these department heads are on board with the event and the closure of the roads. Chief Rainey will be providing two officers to staff the event for the protection of the players present, and Chief Morgan has requested a fire lane be present, present on the road. Both police and fire have been invited to bring vehicles and apparatuses to the event for publicity, but it is not required of them. That is up to them. The chamber is prepared to let the business owners know on the square of the closure one week in advance. It is my hope that the businesses would be interested in hosting one of their famous ladies' night outs that night to bring more commerce to those businesses. Again, this is a free event to the public. While the Danville Chamber has been working with the Colts for this event, this is not a Danville Chamber event. We are working in conjunction with the Colts to provide a location and help market the event to our area. Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Thank you. Any problems with insurance? They've got it. We're okay, and our streets and fire and police are good with this? No calls. I think this is great. Colts, glad we can get our departments out there. I'm certain that they'll be careful. What's the wishes of the council?
Good to me. Big turnout, so it can be yearly. Did you talk about that with them possibly annually?
Yeah. It's something that they're definitely interested in. I know they do try to get to different areas, and I wish I knew what players were coming, but they haven't signed up for their dates yet, so I can let you guys know when that happens. But this is something that we would be interested in continuing annually. Absolutely.
With a little luck.
No pun intended.
For the town. Yes. Thank you. So, what are the wishes of the council? You want to make a motion to accept this and move on?
So moved.
A motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Just keep working with the three people.
I forgot to tell you.
Oh, yes. Your recuse. Okay. All right. So it's past three with one recuse and one, and then just keep working with those three and keep their eyes, and as soon as you guys know who the Colts are, you'll let us know?
Yeah.
Sweet. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Shelby.
All right. All right. We're on to department head meeting, of course. No, no, I'm sorry. We got a capital expenditure request by Jerry. Put him up at the front.
I'm looking to kick off my asset management of the sewer collection system, and this is a tool that will allow us to know where we're at underground. It's not a replacement of Beacon. It's an addition to Beacon. Right now Beacon lets us know where the manholes are, adhesments. This is going to give us a look underground at the elevations and the invert elevations down below ground, so that we can model in the future where our bottlenecks are, pipe sizes, things like that. Plus it gives us an inspection of every manhole in town, a more precise location, and a platform for future additions, such as our camera inspections. So if you don't mind, I've got a real quick presentation, just a few slides, and.
My name is Mark Beller with Banning Engineering. I'd like to thank Jerry and the town council for having me tonight. I just want to direct your attention to the screen. Put a few slides together just to kind of give you a look and feel of what this is and what ultimately we get out of it. That right there is a picture of the current map for the sanitary assets in town. In my experience working in this field, it's actually very good for the amount of manholes that you have locates on and the network of the pipes connecting. But what, what it doesn't have is the, the elevation data underneath and condition data and pictures associated with those, and all of that information is very important for Jerry and his team to be able to go forward and see, be able to pull up that information on a tablet or a phone and look at it in the field. This is a picture of, of what the map could look like as, as an example. You can see it's a little small, but those columns and rows there indicate all the different kinds of information, items that you can have. For example, what condition is this manhole in? Is it falling apart? What material is it? Is it clay? Is it, is it brick? Is it concrete? What kind of, what kind of depth are we looking at, you know, as far as the pipes down there? What sizes are those pipes? I can go on and on. And in this particular system, it allows you to take pictures and log those, and so you could call up on your tablet or phone by clicking on that item and have a picture, and I'll show that. Okay? So part of this proposal is to go and collect this data across the sanitary sewer system, and we do that by using qualified technicians that have experience in sanitary sewer, and we do that also by using high-accuracy GPS equipment. This is mapping-grade equipment, so your accuracy is within two to three, even four inches, so, so it gets you very, very accurate data. And it Bluetooths to a tablet, so that tablet can be used, or the software, rather, can be used in the future for Jerry's crew to go out and collect more on your own. Yes?
Jerry, do you have tablets that would interface with this right now?
Yep. Good question. Okay. This is an example. If you were to click on that manhole there, it could pop up this image of what that looks like. Okay? You can go one more slide more. Thanks. The benefit is that when you collect an asset, say it's a manhole, as soon as you put in those features and you hit submit, it, it goes up to the cloud space. So if you drop that tablet down into the manhole, you're not going to lose any kind of data, so that's, that's a big advantage. Supports attachments. For example, we understand, Jerry tells us that you've got some new camera equipment for the sewers, and that equipment records video and can do reports. Normally what would happen is, is that would be cataloged and filed, but in this case, now you can take that data and attach it to the pipe run, the actual line in the map. So when you click on it, that is easily called right back up, and you could be watching a video of your sewer within a few seconds. So it's, it really empowers the equipment that you've invested in as a town, and it's a big benefit. It's a.
Have you done this before?
Yes, we have.
Do you ever find unusual things?
Yes, we have. We have. I don't know if I want to go into it, because the sewer can get pretty nasty.
I think we can take your word for it.
Yeah. Yeah. Some cockroaches, real, real big cockroaches, okay? But also, this can be retooled. After the initial collection is done, it can be kind of gone to a different angle. So if you want to go back and inspect those manholes at a future date, you can attach additional data to the same point, and so it just kind of keeps rolling on forward as much or as little as you want to put into it. Okay? Something we would like to, that we're including in our proposal, is when the map is complete with this additional data, a concern sometimes is how is it going to keep being updated? And what we would like to, what we propose to do is to develop electronic file submittal standards. So right now, when a developer comes in and builds, say, the Walmart, right, they give you a set of plans of where those pipes are. Well, let's go one step further and require that developer to also submit GIS format, map format data, so that that gets rolled right into the system, and we say how those fields need to be, how that data needs to be in those submittal standards, and that way as development happens, it, it updates the map, and it's not the cost of the town to do that. Okay? So it would be on the developer to submit that when they.
Will this also interact with, say, street department and the water department? They can access this information?
They could surely access it as, as Jerry allows them to access it, you know? And this, it's, I'll call it kind of a unilateral thing, like, for example, if, if you were to go into the water system and want to collect valves and fire hydrants and things like that, you could lay those on top of each other and see how they interact. Some, something that, a really nice feature is after, say, the water model is developed, not model, but the map, rather, you can do some neat tools, like, let's say there's a water main break, and you click on the line that is broken, it can do a back calculation to find out what valves you need to go to to shut it off. So if you have, if you have data where you exercise your valves, say, every year or however often, then it will take that into account. Say one is broken and it's in the open position, it will tell you to go one valve back to get the one that's, that's working. So it's kind of a neat tool, and it's something me and the utilities, I think that's really exciting, really cool. But so back to this, that, that Walmart that went in would then show up on your map as a developer set. We talked a little, oh, yeah.
Is that based on what you're proposing now, or is that an additional?
Yeah.
As we add those things.
To develop the electronic submittal standards is already included in the package, so we'll, we'll help you write that.
Thanks.
Yep. And we already talked about this a little bit, this is the camera equipment. Something that I didn't mention that is really nice is, let's say that Jerry's crew goes out and finds a bend underground in the sewer pipe. It happens, you know, it happens a lot more than you would want it to, but that bend, which is invisible on the surface, then you could go and map that point, so you know where that bend is, and you could, you could draw it that way. So that bend is no longer missing or disappeared. You can go and recall that in the future and always have that where that is. So the only way to find the bend is to do, using, using the camera system. The only way to keep track of it is to map that point, and so it really goes hand in hand and empowers the information that you are, you know, the system you already have.
How many miles of pipe do we have?
I'd have to look that up, but I could.
Probably over 50 miles.
He knows a lot better than I do, you know, so. But after we map it, we could, we could come up with the exact number based on manhole to manhole as we map it, so.
How long would it take to do the town? I'm assuming that it's going to be an hour and a half?
Uh huh. Yeah, that's a good question. Because your current map is. Because your current map is in such good shape, it'll probably only take us, I want to say, two months, you know, to get through and map it all. There are, there are multiple passes that we take at it. To get the elevation data on the pipes accurately, we use regular survey techniques to go back and shoot the, what we call a rim of the manhole. So we have to go through twice on that, so, months. Normally, if we were just, I'll give you an example. Another client we have, the best map they have is from 1955, and it took us a really long time to find, and what they said was out there was not really out there. So, anyway, but we are fortunate in this case that accurate records were kept, and we have a really good springboard to get started.
What type of options do you have with this? Buy it, rent it, or you come and do it one time and leave?
With the system?
Yeah.
It's, it's a GIS-based system, so what that means is it runs on the same, similar platform as like a Google Maps. So for us to come in and do this, do the service the first time, that's a one-time thing, and then we will be hosting it on the, on our cloud space for now. And then the town has the option, after we're done, to go ahead and host it themselves or to go with somebody else, or hopefully not, right? We hope to, that you would stay and do it with us in the future, right? But that, that map is, is property of the town. You can do as you want with it. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
As far as file demand, like size, this will house a lot of pictures, which isn't too bad, actually. It's the videos that is a big demand on file size and servers and things. So I'm talking with Jerry, we can, we can put in a link in the field. How's that on a third-party? What did you call it? Where you put the video? Oh, okay. But you could use, like, for example, a Dropbox or some kind of third-party file sharing, where you could provide a link to us, and we just put it in there, and then you're not housing all of this in-house per se. We could do it in inventive ways like that. I think this is one of my last slides. Another benefit is when the map is gone through the first wave, I guess, the first process, and it's done, what it enables you to do is, this isn't included in what I'm proposing today, but what you can do in the future is put it into a modeling software. And the data is so accurate that it goes straight in, and you can then look at the system for where the bottlenecks are. How is it operating today? And that could be verified through some flow testing and things like that. So in a planning mode, you can look at what the needs are based on today. Another really nice thing is that, let's say the town were to be approached by a development, say, at the edge of town, and it was someone who had a high demand on the current system. They come up with a number, right? Normally, a developer would do some calculations to see what that does, to see if the town would be able to handle that or something like that. Now you can put that into the model and see what it would actually do. So it's a scenario-based model, and then you have something to either verify or refute the developer's conclusions. So it empowers you to know what the system could be like if this scenario were to happen. I hope that makes sense, so.
You're an underground Google.
Yeah, yeah, of sorts. Do you have any further questions for me? This was kind of a real quick, not a lot of detail, but do you have any more questions?
I choose to do this where they want the money to come from.
It's the replacement fund, and then three different expenditure appropriations. There are sufficient funds budgeted for the project.
Go about, Jerry.
Go about.
Okay, we have a department expenditure request for wastewater, the amount of $8,860 with three different funds earmarked, 805, 806, and 808. What is the pleasure of the council? Make a motion to approve it? Motion to approve the department expenditure request for wastewater. I have a second.
A second.
Can I have a second? All those in favor are, for discussion. Somebody seconded it, pardon?
I did.
Hey, we had your hand up. Oh, no, I was, sorry. So hand up, ask a question. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Jerry's. Now we're on to department reports. Water. Hidden back there.
Good evening. The here, status of our, some of our maintenance stuff that I brought to you guys earlier this year. Right now, we're completely, got full redundancy at the water plant. We've got all of our high-service pumps, all the ones we had scheduled this year to be rebuilt. They're all rebuilt and in operation, so we're good to go there. And then I believe last month, had a capital expenditure for frequency drives. Those have been installed at the North Booster Station, and tomorrow, we're going to be installing one of the pumps, take a hydroconstant out, put the other one in, and then after that's installed, then our SCADA guy's going to come in, put the program in, and hopefully we'll have one up and operational and that it's working properly. So we gotta, have to do some tweaking on it probably in some of the program, but we're, but we're going to keep the other hydroconstant in operation, so keep water flowing in the booster area. And then once that is, that pump is pulled, the old one, it's, Bass and Logan's going to take it, rebuild it all, and convert it to a direct-drive pump. And then when that's completed, then they'll bring it back and pull the other one out, and then we'll get it in operation, and then we'll do that. And then the third pump that we're pulling out, we'll have that all taken care of, and that'll be a backup in case we have an issue, and we'll store that at the North Booster Station. So we'll, hopefully, good to go, and do it like that. But, and then I've noticed we've got the fountain going uptown, and the weather turns to this, but hopefully, I've got water flowing in that, and it won't turn to an icicle. But, but it is going, and so if anybody hadn't, hadn't seen it, but it was kind of green when we first turned it on, but now we put a bunch of bleach in it, cleared it up. But other than that, and then we did flush fire hydrants last week, had very minimal, minimal issues. We had, I mentioned that last council meeting that we were going to flush. Betty had it in paper, and we did go out, and have a few areas that are typically dirty. They've always been that way forever, and cleared right up, and I don't think we had any complaints at the town hall, not like that, so. And I think also last, I think today is the last day for sprinkle oil rate request, so if you haven't done it, do bad. So, did you get it done? You're like that, but that's all, if, open any questions anybody has any?
Questions for Jenny?
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Just a couple items to bring you up to date since the last department report. The BZA met and approved a wall sign for Asia Walk, and also approved a special exception for a self-storage facility at 2589 East Main Street. Is to say they got the approval if they wanted to go forward with their engineering and design. They've given no indication yet that they're going to do that, but they did get approval, so we might see something going in out there. And then the BZA will meet again tomorrow night for a couple of minor requests. Site plan review for Woodland Terrace, the assisted living facility on East Main, was scheduled for this month, but just due to some engineering and design, it got delayed, so we probably won't see that until May. We had our public rollout of the strategic plan on April 11th. It was a light turnout, but it was good information, and I got a couple of good leads for some folks that will be interested on serving on some committees or task forces to help implement that plan. That was followed the next night by the first meeting of the Redevelopment Commission. Mike was there and endured another two-hour presentation on training and the strategic plan and.
Actually, it was really good.
It was really good, wasn't it?
Very good.
Yeah, it was very good.
Pleasantly surprised.
Yeah. So they're, they've agreed to meet on the second, Thursday of each month going forward, trying to get some activities and implement some of these action items and start getting their feet wet with some of the tools that the redevelopment can do. Had a meeting with staff and folks representing Tractor Supply, looking at a lot out beside Walmart. They're very encouraging and very positive. We have our fingers crossed, it's not a done deal. It still has to be approved by their corporate headquarters, but the folks that we met with, which were the real estate people, they really like Danville, and we're really excited about it. So we were meeting with them, answering their general questions about development in town, so very optimistic for that, yeah. Thank you for passing the proclamation for Arbor Day. We've been working with North and South Elementarys. Couple years ago, we gave them trees to plant, and they've agreed to do that again this year. And then they're also working with DNR to give seedlings to all the third graders, so that they can take those home and plant them and start perpetuating our celebration of Arbor Day. And then lastly, the first meeting in May, I'm going to be bringing back to you Phase Two for the airport annexation, so Phase One will be done, and we're moving forward with the next one. So lots of things going on. Questions for me?
That's a lot.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Chief Morgan, fire department?
Want to let the council know that I was going to bring a proposal in tonight, but I chose to table it until the next meeting. I've made a proposal to replace the AEDs in this building, police department, the DAC and the pool, the ones that are in those positions now, are getting to a point where we can't find parts for them anymore. One of the reasons I'm waiting, the Marion Township trustee had came to me and asked if he thought it would be, if we thought it would be a good idea if they put some of the churches out in Winchester. I fully concurd. It takes us a while to get out there, and an AED and a church can really make a difference in saving someone's life, and we'll get a better price break, hopefully, if we can order his and the town's at the same time. So we're waiting on that. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. We're going to be starting a program with our fire prevention where it says, "Close before you doze," and it's a initiative to encourage kids to close the doors in their bedrooms before they go to sleep. It takes approximately four minutes for an open-door bedroom to fill with smoke and toxic fumes, and it takes over 10 minutes for one with the door closed. So we're trying to encourage kids to start closing their doors. And we know it's scary, but we're trying to kind of put some fears for rest and, and help these kids understand that it is a life-saving measure. Very encouraged. We met with all the department heads today. We're starting our next food drive, I guess, if you want to call it that. It's going to be for the backpack program. There's currently 98 kids on the backpack program, and we spoke to the coordinator. She was really excited that we're going to take this on. So tomorrow morning, our crews will be putting the totes in each department, and we'll be encouraging employees again to start gathering food, and we'll do it for 30 days, and it's kind of a neat, it's neat that the department heads are, all get together and agree. We all kind of decide if this is what, is a good goal, or if it's not a good goal, we hash things out, so I'm excited about it. I think all the department heads are excited about it as well. Lastly, 18 years I've been chief, I've never had anything like this occur. I apologize for it, but I appreciate the support of the council. I understand it, split the council, and I apologize for that. Like I said, it's, it's never occurred in my department, and I hope that it doesn't ever again. So thank you very much.
Any questions for Chief?
Thanks, Mark.
Wastewater.
First being the snow event, was not kind to us. Had a plow that the frame got bent on. And in the process of buying our trucks through the DPW, we ended up with an extra plow. So what I would like to do is scrap this one and possibly allow the park to rebuild it, to one of their new trucks, if they're interested. It'd be a good cost savings for them. Put our spare plow on the truck, replace the one that's bent. Just because of the cost of buying a new frame for the plow and having it installed is probably more expensive than a new plow. And the second thing is a tree fell on the green truck. It's not real bad, but it's, we try and replace the fender, paint it, it's never going to match. The truck's over 10 years old, so I would just like to hang on to it, maybe five or six years from now, when we do a bond, replace it at that time. And not do any repairs. It's drivable, you can't really notice it unless you look hard.
Make sure it's not a safety concern, but it does drive again.
No, not at all. Just a little unsightly. And we had some erosion with the snow melt and the four-inch rain that one morning. Close the pipe on High Street. That's our main line coming from the high schools, perhaps around the north side of town, kind of in our bottleneck area. I'm going to do a temporary fix, because in the future, this whole pipe could be getting replaced with a larger pipe. And we had some overflows from the snow melt wind event. It's the same ones that seem to be stubborn. We are looking at them. The asset management plan will help us get to a point of believing those in the future.
Are they all kind of the same issues?
I think, I think it's sump pumps. Too many sump pumps tied to our system. Our pipes are only eight or 10 inches in size, and if people have a six-inch lateral, and there's 3,000 of them, it quickly overwhelms our smaller pipes. So we try to work with people. We have to provide a storm outlet for sump pumps and make sure there's no washing machines hooked up or anything. So Barry's working with me to try and one property at a time, work through those.
Anybody else? Any other question? Water.
Can you give Jerry a little bit, give you a little bit better explanation of how we find those? Most of the times, I'm inside doing a building inspection, and I'll see something doesn't quite look right, and then we inform the homeowner, because they never know. They don't realize they're not doing anything, they're doing anything wrong, so we'll usually dime and find out if it's going into sanitary, and there's a lot of the square that we know that goes into sanitary, but repairing that is very, very difficult. So as we find them, if, if I find them, I let him know, and we do the best we can to try to help them get, because it helps both sides. It helps us more than it helps them, because once they flush and it's gone, it's out of their mind. So, but when it flushes and it goes, the storm goes into Jerry, that's a problem for him every time it rains. So it's kind of a big deal for us to figure out where those I and I problems are, and for me to help Jerry as much as possible to provide an outlet for the sump pumps. Sometimes even the roof drains are tied into his sanitary. And you want to talk about a lot of water? That's all the water that goes into a 2,500-square-foot building, four-inch rain. You can do the calculations. You can do the calculations, it's going to overload his pipe immediately. So, the big deal is, is to get the roof drains off of it. Sump pumps are a big deal, but I do know of two situations where we caught by roofing permit, we caught their storm drains or their roof drains going into sanitary, so we got those corrected. A little bit at a time, and maybe we can find a big difference there in the INI, but I have, for stormwater, I got a large project coming up, the whole north side of town from 36 over, from Wayne Street all the way to Cross Street. We're going to replace 26 structures before we pave. And I'm going to ask Ray to be a little patient with me, because we have a lot to do. We've worked with the paving company to try to buy as much time as possible, but I would rather us take a little bit of time and put these structures in before we pave than to go in and pave it and tear it out and fix it. So, we didn't know about a lot of these that we were going to do, especially as far as paving goes, but there's a lot of structures, and we're going to have some road closings. It's going to be a tough period for the next month. I hope it's going to be only a month, but there's going to be a lot of tough days ahead for traffic, because we got to have the safety of the people that are working there. More importantly, their safety is more important than anything else.
How much notification can you give people that are surrounding?
What I'm going to do is, I just talked to Betty about, I'm going to give her a small article to put in the paper tomorrow, and then, every block that we do, so if we go from, let's just say Wayne and Clinton, this first block, the week prior to us doing work there, there'll be a door tag on every door that's affected. I just try to let them know. Sometimes, they get those, sometimes, they don't. I'm going to ask to put it on Facebook. If we do Facebook, we do a tag on the door, and we put something in the Republican, that's about as good as we can do for notifications. And then, the other key part of that is to have signage and a good round, you know, way to get around it. And I think we're lucky enough that wherever we close, we'll be able to get around that construction. It's going to be an inconvenience, but you're going to be able to make one block turn north or south and get to the next road. If we're not blocking them all off at one time, we're just going to chop them off intersection by intersection, and hopefully, we don't find any surprises underneath the pavement, which I've been here long enough to know that we're going to find them. So, yeah, there's 26 structures, and in the next meeting, I'll have a request for some additional funds, because this is a pretty big investment. We're going to use some different material, and in the next meeting, I'll have a full literature on the type of material we're going to use, which it's, it's a gasketed structure, so we won't have sinkholes, we won't have anything sucking in around all of our structures. It's a gasketed system, much better system. It's new, so the first couple that we do may be a little bit slow, but it gives us the opportunity to set our elevations wherever we want. So, they're easier to use, less weight, and actually, long run, they're cheaper. Material's more expensive, but the labor to put them in is less, so it's the wave of the future, and we're going to see how easy it is to put it in here in the next couple weeks.
Do you require interaction?
Absolutely. I will let the fire chief know, I'll let the police chief know. Every road, they're my first call, because they're going to be looking out for us. If they can help, they'll help. But I'm trying to give notification to everybody as early as possible. I was supposed to get the structures today, and now, I'm told I'm not going to get them till Thursday, so that'll give us a little bit more time. And I wasn't sure where we were going to start out, because depending on what structures we get, everyone's identified by intersection, so which ones we get first is going to dictate where we go hang tags and, you know, let the public know. So, it's going to be a little tough, but I'm confident that we can get it done, and I'm confident that we can get it done in a timeframe that Ray will be at least somewhat happy. So, we'll see how that works out. But we're working together. He's been helping me a ton on whatever I need, he's been helping a lot, so I appreciate Ray stepping up when I've needed help, and I don't have all the help that I need, he's been giving it to me. So, thanks to Ray Whitaker. The next thing is, is we're working on trying to get the town hall's operating cost down. We did the roof, there was a noticeable difference there. Kathy was kind enough to give me a breakdown of year by year, what our utility bills for gas are in the winter time. This past year was rough, because we had a lot of cold days. So, we put that into like a five-year model, and we average it, and then you price it per BTU. So, our cost has definitely gone down. The roof was tremendous help. Then, we stepped up and did, you know, took the boiler system off in the summertime. That was $500 a month savings. So, the idea is to do that earlier, and what that creates is a little bit of comfort problems for people in town hall. But if we time this just right, and people can wear sweaters and turn on a fan or whatever, open a window if we can, if it's not raining, then we can save another two months worth. So, we're going to try, I'm going to try to do that in May, first part of May, and end it in the middle of October. That's kind of pushing the envelope on our weather. We get cold days, and we get hot days in there, so we'll do the best we can. But there's four 500, four 100-gallon, 125-gallon tanks in the boiler room, and all they do is keep water hot. So, when the school was here, it was really needed that you had that much water on demand, hot water. So, what we've done is we pulled three of those tanks off, because the volume of people and the usage that you have for hot water, we do not need those tanks, because all the boilers doing is keep those things hot. So, we're going to remove three of those off and try to continue to save more money. We're also going to start working on the Bosick Gem windows sometime in May. We're waiting on the window manufacturer to get, those are custom windows, so they have to be custom-made. Once those get completed, then we'll work on installing, and we'll have more savings there from air infiltration. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Barry?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Parks Park.
I'm going to be the quick one today, actually. Town council report in front of you. We went live with our rec desk. It's going great. Online rentals, awesome. Also, 10% off on pool memberships, so get your pool memberships while you can. Tomorrow, we have a National Honor Society Work Day. We will have about 52 kids come out, and we do all kinds of random projects, because it's cold this time, we can't plant flowers, so we're going to have to plan accordingly on that. I've been working hard on the amphitheater project. I don't have any drawings for you yet, but I hope to maybe have some drawings for you by the next meeting, hopefully. And then, we've been working hard on the pool, just prepping it. We power washed it already, and doing some repairs in there, and already starting to work on the pool house and stuff. So, it's, we're chugging along, it's getting there. So, it's kind of crazy to think that the pool's going to be open in like a month and a half.
You have a standard day, you open the pool? That's my favorite day.
Yeah, Memorial Day weekend.
Memorial Day.
Yeah. And we should, we should hit that, no problem. That's all I got.
Any questions?
We prepped for the first wedding, or first non-snowing wedding this past weekend, and got the tent up, got everything power washed, got some new garage doors on there, it's pretty nice. And then, we just kind of cleaned up and got it ready for the, for the season.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works.
First of all, we have done our usual. This month, we have fixed yards that we got into with the plows. 11, 12 inches of snow, it's sometimes hard to see that curve. We have been cleaning at the shop. We was handed a IDIM report this last week. It was three years old. Found out that we need to do some house cleaning down there, so we've been working on that very diligently, trying to get that done. We have talked about training since I became superintendent, and we had the entire crew attend a work zone safety seminar out at the four-hitch fairgrounds this month. They all came back, we need new signs, we need this, we need that. So, they did learn something while they were there. We've poured a few sidewalks, one in Stratford and one in Woodfield. We've done some coal badging. We've worked on some catch basins for Barry. We have put out a little bit of salt in the last month. I have ordered the remainder of our order for 2018. They will be shipping it. We are in good shape as far as salt on hand, so... Today, I compared numbers with Kathy, and much to her surprise, my numbers matched hers. So, the budget, yeah. We have met with the state on tearing out the concrete around the square. The state has some signals wires that are in the concrete, and we wanted to make sure with them that it was going to be all right to tear those out, and the guy that I met with said that if we would tear them out, he would gladly fix them. He's had so many complaints on the stoplight at Washington Street, and it is the circles that are under the red brick, stamped brick. So, he was glad to volunteer, once we tear it out, get the new white concrete put back in, then he would have the state come in and put new signal wire back in there, so that stoplight would work proper. We have been working on a sidewalk list that has been behind. We have a bid of $4 a square foot. I'm working with Gary on that as far as getting a contractor hired to get some sidewalks And with that, I would like to thank the former superintendent for always being there, being a phone call away, being someone that I could call and say, "Hey, who did you have do this? Or who did you have do that?" Rob has helped me out tremendous, and I just want to honor him in front of the board. Any questions?
Questions for Ray?
Thank you.
Laura, you see for...
Hopefully, that was the last one.
The last hurrah. Thanks, Ray. All right. Chief Randy.
President, council members. Provided you some information prior to the meeting. If you had referred to this stat sheet, the back side of that, just want to bring to your attention three or four different stats. For the month of March, the officers took a total of 855 runs, which is 27 runs above our normal average month for 2017. They conducted 455 traffic stops, which is 107 traffic stops above the average in 2017. Within those traffic stops, they arrested 10 drivers while intoxicated, which was the same as last month, but that's 5.5 above the monthly average for 2017. Also, our department made 28 criminal arrests in the month of March. In the previous meeting with the police commissioners, they approved my recommendation to offer conditional offers of employment to Thomas Riggs and Travis Wilson. You have those packets in front of you, from the resume to the photo, and a letter of recommendation from people that know them. I will be contacting them this evening, and then tomorrow, we'll start working on getting appointments that are required by perf, get them to the perf pension, as well as contacting the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy to get them a seat in the next available academy. I'd answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Chief Randy?
Well?
Any public comment? Come on, anyone at all?
Public Works.
That's a demerit.
I'm sure Will can help you find some tree work. Make you feel right at home, feel one with the tree. All right, around the horn, real quick. Gary?
I just wanted to remind the council that we've filled two vacancies at Public Works and Ray and I are interviewing. We've interviewed one. We're preparing to interview the second on Friday, so we hope to have those two positions fail in two weeks. Laura?
Laura? Lynn? Dennis? I've got nothing. That leaves Claim Docket.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve Claim Docket. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Drive careful.